Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll order. I pledge allegiance to the black United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a roll call, please, Jason?
Council President McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
I move we excuse the absent councilmember.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the absentee councilmember be approved. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries, and tonight, we're going to start off with a proclamation. It is Summer Meals Week.
Hey, proclamation. Whereas summer is the hungriest time of the year for many children, when families struggle to make up for lost school meals and food insecurity tends to increase. And whereas more than 17.3% of Washington children are food insecure, meaning they do not have regular access to adequate food. Whereas in the 2020-2021 school year, 48% of students in Renton School District qualified for free and reduced-priced lunches, yet only 19% of youth in Washington State access summer meal sites. And whereas the National School Lunch Program Seamless Summer Option and the Summer Food Service Program play vital roles in helping low-income children get the nutrition they need during the summer months and alleviate food insecurity. And whereas summer meal programs are most effective when paired with educational and enrichment activities, providing students a fun, safe place to be with friends, helping curb the learning loss experienced during summer months, and preparing students to return to school ready to learn and thrive. And whereas the city of Renton and the Renton School District are committed to ensuring that no child goes hungry this summer, now therefore, I Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 27th through July 1, 2022, as Summer Meals Week in the City of Renton, and encourage all community members to join me in recognizing this important service and witness whereof. I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 27th day of June 2022. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Okay, and tonight, to accept the proclamation, we have Teresa Nishi from our own Parks Department. We also have, and I hope I pronounce this right, Erica Zangare?
Hello, it's Zangare.
Zangare, all right. Would you like to say a few words? Yes.
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council for accepting this proclamation for a very critical time during the summer. Many children do not have food during the summertime, especially because they receive the free meals during the school year. And so we thank you so much for acknowledging this and recognizing this important time, and excited to work with Teresa this summer for a wonderful summer meals program here in the City of Renton. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for joining us. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing over the 2023-2024 biennial budget, and we have our own Kerry Roller presenting.
Thank you. So the city is required to hold public hearings prior to the adoption of the biennial budget and setting the property tax levy for the coming year. This is the first of three public hearings. The second and third are scheduled for October. The first public hearing is an opportunity for stakeholders to provide input prior to the development of the 2023-2024 biennial budget. The public hearing has been appropriately noticed, and additional details regarding the city's budget and budget process can be found on the city's website. And I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone calling in tonight to testify on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
No, we do not have anyone signed up to speak in advance. A public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And we have no one in person signed up to advance, so what's the wish of the council at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President McGurven.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. Next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Renton's annual water quality report is now available at rentonwa.gov/waterquality. Read about Renton's water source and treatment, and see how Renton complies with strict drinking water quality standards, and learn water-saving techniques. For a printed copy of the report, please call 425-430-7287, or email Lauren Imhoff at LMHOFF@rentonwa.gov. On Tuesday, June 28th, the Urban Forestry Division will be doing tree removal for public and road user safety on Maple Valley Highway on the westbound side, west of the parking area for Riverview Park. Traffic will be reduced to one lane in either direction on the eastbound side from 9:30 a.m. until 2:30 p.m. There will also be brief closures of all four lanes of traffic due to the position of the tree being removed. The Coalition of Filipino-American Organizations of Washington State, in partnership with the city and other agencies, will sponsor a free food and grocery distribution event on Thursday, June 30th, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. at Highlands Neighborhood Park, 800 Edmonds Avenue Northeast. Surface Water Utility Section is developing a stormwater management action plan to protect rivers, lakes, and streams from pollution, and improve water quality in a selected high-priority basin of Renton's watersheds. Please help select the basin by Thursday, June 30th. Learn more at rentonwa.gov/watersheds. The next pop-up lunch event, sponsored by the Equity Housing and Human Services Department and Emergency Feeding Program, will be held on Tuesday, July 5th, from 12 to 1:30 p.m. at Liberty Park. Lunch and personal hygiene kits will be available to those with food insecurities and/or who are unsheltered. Come connect with Renton Police Department officers and personnel at Pop Up With a Cop on Tuesday, July 12th, at the Farmer's Market from 3 to 7, and on Thursday, July 14th, at Gene Coolon Park from 4 to 7. Ask questions, get safety information, and get to know who is serving your community. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. So we are on to audience comment, and we have no one signed up in person, but I know we have a couple of people signed up calling in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do have a few people sign up to speak. The first is Kathleen Powell. I'm glad you don't see her sign in tonight. So the next person is Ashley Dale. Ashley, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Ashley Dale, and I'm the Director of Operations of Bailing Out Benji. As you know by now, we're a nonprofit that researches the puppy mill industry and their connection to pet stores. I did see that there was the ordinance on the agenda tonight, and while we always prefer to see a straightforward, humane pet store ordinance move forward, we are hopeful that this proposed legislation will stop the sale of dogs in Renton that are coming from puppy mills. The subject of retail pet sales was referred to the Planning Commission back in March of 2021, one month after the one and only puppy-selling store within city limits opened their doors. Since opening, Puppyland Renton has imported 2,564 puppies to the City of Renton. There have been multiple customers who were sold sick puppies on a financing loan. You may have heard about one customer who had an interest rate of 126%. Sadly, since that Jesse John segment aired, another customer was locked into a loan with an interest rate of 184%. These are just the customers that have come forward and shared their experience. There are likely hundreds of other customers still trying to pay off their puppy loan. We have also had customers come to us for help after Puppyland sold them a sick puppy. One of those puppies had to be euthanized at just three years old due to ongoing health issues. Another puppy was suspected to have parvo, and another had giardia that could not be cleared up despite multiple rounds of treatments. The Planning Commissioners were very clear at their May 4 meeting that they are in support of an ordinance and voted to have it go into effect within 90 days. This was because the process of this ordinance has taken over a year, and Puppyland is well aware of these new requirements that will be put into place. Renton residents have also made it very clear that they wanted an all-out humane ordinance that does not allow retail pet sales. Unfortunately, that is not what has moved forward, but they too would like to see this go into effect within 90 days, not six months. The difference between 90 days and six months may seem insignificant, but based on last year's numbers, there will be approximately 715 more puppies imported over the next six months to Puppyland Renton. That is 715 families that may be sold a sick puppy and may be locked into a predatory pet loan. This ordinance is allowing Puppyland to continue selling puppies. They simply have to provide more information prior to sale. We hope that the council will take into consideration what their constituents have been asking for over the past year, and have this ordinance go into effect within 90 days. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Gina Carey. Gina, go ahead.
If you're speaking, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Pavoni and distinguished councilmembers. My name is Gina Carey, president and voter. And I've been here before because I am an animal advocate and have been pursuing a humane ordinance for the last year and a half. Just to kind of go through things again, beginning on January 27th, Bailing Out Benji contacted Renton City Council about passing a humane ordinance. On February 8th of 2021, they informed you that they were aware that Puppyland was preparing to open a pet store in Renton selling puppy mill puppies. On February 12th, Puppyland opened their doors and started selling puppy mill puppies here in Renton without a business license. On March 8th, the Renton City Council referred retail pet sales to the Planning Commission. So this has been, you know, going on for over a year. There have been pending meetings, city council meetings, planning commission meetings. We have been talking about this for quite some time. In the meantime, HB 1424 had its first reading on January 29th of 2021, and Governor Hinsley signed HB 1424 on April 16th, 2021. So they passed it in three months with an effective date of July 25th of 2021. So they accomplished everything in seven months. Almost a year ago, August 18th of 2021, the Renton Planning Commission held a public hearing for the proposed retail pet sales regulations. There was an outcry by us, the constituents, that we're saying, no, we really want a humane ordinance. So the Planning Commission was awesome. They looked back to the drawing board, and worked diligently, and worked hard to prepare something that met our needs. So then on December 15th, the Renton Planning Commission announced they would be pursuing a humane ordinance in response to us. On January 19th of this year, it was announced that in the anticipation of a lawsuit, starting the hearing process for a humane ordinance again delayed, which doesn't make sense to me. Well, then on February 28th, I asked, where do we go from here? How many more steps are there? What's the timeline? My personal goal is that Puppyland is no longer selling puppy mill puppies by the 4th of July, and asked if that was possible. And it saddens me that we will not meet that goal. Today, I hope you will consider implementing the new drafted ordinance as soon as possible. Yes, there has been lots of compromises on both. The only company that is selling puppy mill puppies in Renton is Puppyland, and we, the public. I would love to see this effective by August 1st, and I know that's asking a lot, but even September 1st would be great. I think we've been having this discussion for way too long, and providing Puppyland many opportunities to change their ways. We're not shutting them down. We're not forcing them to leave. We're only asking them to close the pipeline of puppy mill puppies to Renton. And I do not see why we need to give them 90 days to do that. Puppyland has already burdened our rescues, the animal humane, and our general population without putting a dime into a safety net for those dogs. We are bearing the safety net cost of them doing business here. I also asked for a tax at one time. The least we could do is enact this ordinance sooner rather than later. I do not want them to go through another holiday season, and I would really like to see this happen soon. Please, please, please enact this ordinance and make it effective August 1st or no later than September 1st. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person is Justin Kerr. Justin, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Justin Kerr. I am the owner of Puppyland in Renton. First, I just want to say directly that Puppyland is not a puppy mill, and Puppyland does not support puppy mills in any way. We are locally owned and operated, humane pet store. I do not support this ordinance. It simply needs more time and cleaning up. It's overcomplicated, overburdenous, and just plain confusing. We have a planning board. We at one point stated something along the lines, but this thing has said they're normal, and that's something they typically deal with. But they've been put in charge to present the ordinance to not only regulate pet sales, but also create a definition of what a puppy mill is, and what makes a good breeder or bad breeder, in this case, a puppy mill. To my knowledge, the Planning Commission is not made up of veterinarians, breeders, or anything along those lines to have personal hands-on experience on the subject or the topic, just a regular old planning commission. There is case law with a legal definition already in place of what a puppy mill is, and this new version is unnecessary and contradicting to that. But while the only pet store affected by this ordinance has attempted to reach out and offer realistic common sense solutions that are proven to work, and we've been ignored. And honestly, in some of the previous meetings with the Planning Commission, a lot of disrespect and attack on some of these calls. I'm sure that some of the outstanding in-welfare organizations have been welcomed into the conversation with open arms. These are the very same groups that are posting online that they would refer outright ban, but they hope that this will lead us in the right direction. So how can they reasonably put in a regulation that works when they want to ban us at the same time? These groups also usually do not have real hands-on experience as a pet store or a dog breeder to fully understand how we work, but they're full of ideas how to regulate us, or as me clear, shut us down without a humane ordinance. Earlier, another comment that was made was falsely stated by, her name is Gina, that Puppyland operated without a business license. This is just one small example that just happened to pop up about the outright lies you have been told, so that you would pass some sort of ordinance so that they could get to that end result of forcing us to close, whether it's by overregulation or an outright ban. You've been told we've had plenty of time to see that it's coming, so we should be able to comply. After all, I did say that Puppyland doesn't support puppy mills, and I meant it. But to be honest, this ordinance has changed so many times since the very first time it's been there, and all the way up to this point, even to this current version, and the processes honestly had a pretty big lack of transparency. So how can I prepare for something that I don't know what's actually going to go into law? I can't prepare for something, and then it changes, and it changes, it just doesn't make sense. I was unaware somebody's apartment was up until just yesterday, when I was finally able to see this ordinance for the first time outside of the Planning Commission sitting. So realistically, January 1st is not doable to comply. While Puppyland doesn't support puppy mills, this is a pretty extensive and overburdenous one. I have to hold myself to state because they are apparently risking their own criminal record by working for me now, according to Page 13, Section J, that says any person can be liable. So I mean, I have any employees, and I'll be left to sort of run business every day and any other business I may have. I have to get every affidavit for every single puppy, and hundreds of breeders, and thousands every six months. To regulate this out of business, if not for the overcomplicated language and lack of staff. It's just kind of lab.
Justin, you're starting to break up.
So we closed our doors that this ordinance has passed as written, and we'll have humane breeders. It is the, on the affidavit portion two, if that is something that's been in place, we should realistically be allowed to have somebody do this for us. If it's not me going to, I brought employees there, I can do it again too, so it would make sense. You've been told this is a targeted, but we are literally the only pet store that can and ever will exist in Renton, so how is it possible? Here's coming past regulation, that's where it is. Honestly, it doesn't make sense. Verifiable, trackable, so it's something that you guys should look at before this. It's not a 45-page document, it's complicated. We've reached out for opportunities to meet with you all. Most of you not giving us that opportunity. At the end of the day, if you still don't agree with our business and just want to pass what you want, that's your choice. But at least give democracy a try and transparency, and the opportunity to have a real conversation and show you who we are. Don't just believe that they claim their lies and given about us. We can work together. We are open regulation. It just should be practical. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
The next person is Albert Sardina. Albert, go ahead.
Good evening. The Honorable Mayor Pavoni and the City Council. Very simply, as has been said previously, the owners of Puppyland have often had to contend with many untruths regarding their business. Panels over four square feet in size have been described as no larger than the speaker's podium. Healthy, vibrant puppies have been characterized as despondent and barely holding on. His emotionally charged statements such as these that seek to undermine the entire industry treat all of his participants as unethical. However, good policy defies data and facts to address perceived fraud. But to that end, I have a few key statements that were made by your colleague down in Pierce County, Councilman Dave Morel. Regarding the ordinance that was passed in Pierce County. Every time he went to Puppyland, he did not see what people were complaining about. He did not see any dogs in wire cages with matted fur. He called animal control and asked them, how many complaints do you have? 2020 for Puppyland. They had nine complaints. The full weight and data available to animal control, Pierce County, was used in Councilman Morel's investigation. They made inspections on all nine of those complaints. No violations were filed in the three years that Puppyland in his district down in Pierce County. He did not have one complaint from a consumer. Picture one. Bad dog. Bad puppy. I was violent. He called the Humane Society in Pierce County, which represents and services an area much larger than the City of Renton. He asked them, how many dogs have you got? Since they're all microchipped. Every dog that Puppyland sell is microchipped. Can you trace any of those microchipped dogs back to Puppyland? None. Zero puppies came to the Humane Society with microchipped that either currently or previously had been registered to Puppyland. Those are the comments from your colleague down in Pierce County. Furthermore, it has been stated that the goal of this ordinance is to stop the sale of puppy mill dogs into the City of Renton. You know, the unfortunate reality is that unethical pet sales do occur, but in drafting this ordinance, the City of Renton should stop focusing on a store that is able to be regulated and observed, and take a look at the elements of unethical pet sales. Selling animals in a pop-up center, either in a parking lot on the side of a road, selling animals sight unseen through the internet, selling animals in a veterinary breeding record, providing any consumer protection, even having a simple guidance should the animal get sick. No initiatives to spay or neuter animals. Every single one of those bullet points is ridiculous, unethical breeding standards, and they are happening in this country, unfortunately. But every one of those bullet points is an example of what Puppyland is doing to separate itself from the nonsense. The owners of Puppyland visit each of their breeders at least once per year. At those visits, they arrange for independent veterinarians to conduct a vet scan on all the parents. They visit their transportation provider multiple times a year to make sure that that provider is up to par with their breeder standards. They provide with the sale of each puppy a verifiable almanac of information that includes veterinary records, parent records, three specific care instructions. They provide with each puppy health guarantees, aimed at ensuring that a puppy does not go home with a body of disease later or not. And they offer a reimbursement agreement to spay and neuter their puppies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next person is Paula Sardina. Paula, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Paula Sardina, and I've had the pleasure of working on animal rescue issues for nearly 30 years. I have worked with humane societies across the country. I'm in Florida tonight. I've also been a lifelong member of PETA. I want to tell you tonight that a lot of what you've heard as an advocate for Puppyland is demonstrably false. These folks come before these councils, and they come time and time again, and they reveal you with horrific stories. In 2020, we started with HB 1424, and since that was brought up, let me tell you a little bit about that. We had stakeholder meetings that were transparent, which is a process that I don't believe this council has undertaken. We discovered there is an equity issue with pet ownership, especially as it pertains to the BIPOC community, and that lengthy bill was stripped down to two lines because they could not find 147 legislators who believed the lies that they were being told, who were willing to vote to ban pet stores. Two things came out of HB 1424 that Governor Hinsley signed. We understood that Puppyland and Puppy World are not, have not, and have never been a puppy mill. That the testimony being provided was strongly hyperbolic, and we destroyed it at the state level. The state was unwilling to interfere with interstate commerce or tortuously interfere with a business which the state bill was squarely aimed at one particular business. We understood by conducting some of these ordinances on the local level, there were a couple of stores that were bad actors. One was in Vancouver, Washington, and they would close, and they have. We have been tremendously transparent. For those of you that chose to visit the Renton store, you will see there are LCDs that are 60-plus inches that show you the breeders. They fly drones over the breeders. This is a niche business. We understand that these animal rescue industries use coded questions. Had you met with us when we requested the meeting, we had veterinarians and professors from historically black colleges prepared to meet with you all. I will send to you tonight their comments. We need choice in the pet industry because not everyone can volunteer the way some of your older constituents here are because of their privilege. Not everyone has a house with a backyard where they need. There are veterans, there are children, there are parents that need an option. Less than 60 days ago, Russell Wilkins here, what they were criticized by some of these same groups for exercising their free choice to not get their dog from a rescue. Parents need to be able to make the choices that are best for their family. Today, we're talking about dogs, and I thought about that, because I think everyone needs to be treated humanely. When you look at your colleagues or you look at your children, how many of you buy Air Jordan sneakers? Are you willing to say, fill out an affidavit to every store that sells them, and certify that they don't use child labor from China? Are you willing to say because of public safety, well, we know in the BIPOC community, people get killed over those sneakers, that we need to ban them? Let me tell you something, discussing this with some attorney, you are opening the door for us to come back with that. When people make policy that is not made- When people make policy that is not made for the good of the public because we are bending to the will of special interest, it is not good for Renton. And I know that because I was a resident there and my business address is still there. It is not good for the people. If we truly want to solve the problem of puppy mills, 1,700 puppies sold in Pierce County, we had them run the chips, not one dog within the humane society. When they tell you that, they're lying. You can run the microchip. There are puppies that end up in the shelters. They are not coming from retail pet stores. No one invests that type of money in something that is as close to them as their child to then surrender it. We want to be part of the solution. We don't endeavor to be part of the problem. But the process has not been open. It has not been fair and it's not been transparent. We're asking you to pause this so that you can hear from the other side and democracy can. We respect the Renton City Council, but tonight it feels a little bit like the Trump Supreme Court, and we know how that turned out. Thank you.
The next person is David Otto. David, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, the council members. I submitted a letter a few weeks ago, maybe a week ago, June 23rd, outlining what I viewed to be some of the problems of a prior draft, looking at the current draft today. And for a legal standpoint, I think we've got some issues. It's important to acknowledge upfront that nobody here is supporting, in support of, or wants to maintain the ongoing existence of puppy mills. Challenges making sure that we get it right when we start making accusations around the financial support and well being of them being encouraged by one retail store. This, at least the prior testimony from the two parties, this sounds and looks like, a lot like an anti puppy land bill and not a bill to, that seeks to get at the issue. I mean, the issue is complicated. The issue from a legal standpoint, in my view, is not going to be solved by this ordinance that's presently drafted. If anything, you're going to invite more problems. It's too broad, it's too vague, it's discriminatory, it's too arbitrary. Just for a few of the highlights. I think one of the fundamental problems here is procedurally, let's check this ordinance, it, it's, it seeks to penalize, it focuses too much on the operational specifics of the retail store rather than informational, desired information, informational requirements. The challenges to set up a protocol that secures that information in a manner that makes sense for a commercial standpoint. You, I think this, I think the council members and mayor would agree that under no circumstances is the city prepared to or capable of reviewing the number of affidavits that would need to be reviewed on a daily basis in order to timely effect a sale. The operational impediments here are significant. The, the legal method, if you look at this, I'm just giving you my view here, the legal method for looking to try to do something that makes sense is to, is to focus on the market that is developing around what's generally referred to as attributional assets or attributional commodities. What that simply means is there are, there is information that's provided in respect to the particular thing that's being sold, in this case, puppies, and that information is available or not available to consumers and based on the availability of that information. And the ordinance can be somewhat specific relative to the types of information that would be appropriate and meaningful, but based on the availability of information. And that information being self-reported, the consumer can make a decision to act or not act. And that, that methodology, protocol and regulatory structure around that is very much in evidence when you look at various commodities, oil, gas, corn. But the notion here is that people want to buy something, in this case, a dog, but they want to know the fact that it comes from or what the attributes are of it. And this ordinance is backwards. You're looking to punish and put the burden on the retail store and the, and in this case, a puppy. And it's far, far too targeted to be anything other than arbitrary and capricious. So I think, I think the idea of puppy mills is a good one.
Thank you.
The next person is Ben York. Ben, go ahead.
Hi, good evening to the mayor, council members. My name is Ben York, and I'm speaking on behalf of puppyland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to me. I want to start by reiterating that nobody, not puppyland or myself or anyone speaking on behalf of puppyland tonight is supporting or advocating on behalf of puppy mills. On a personal level, my girlfriend and I fostered a dog, she was also a rescue and saved two this year alone from high school shelters until they found their forever own Seattle area. We plan to foster another soon. What we are here to speak on is this ordinance that does nothing to get to the root of the problem, puppy mills. This ordinance makes it commercially impossible to operate a pet store in puppyland. It is not possible to have, well, you have a pet store, and keep in mind that a pet lover certified with notarization to each of these criteria, free of crime, so it is also not commercially possible to pull for a breeder, even the best breeder, to allow each and every purchaser from a pet store to inspect that facility at their request. Additionally, there's a $1,000 threshold would likely put in place that is related to shelters. However, it sets an effective price on the quantity of puppy mill dogs. Should some random breeder on the face of three dogs and four will get it, sell that dog for $1,000, that dog salesperson is okay and that dog will not go to puppy mills. Should puppyland sell that same type of dog for $1,001 sourced from a reputable breeder, regulated with a condition, but is unable to certify or allow inspection for a same number, virtually acceptable reason, that dog is from puppy mills. Or if the breeder is, does not have a, that breeder can be a puppy mill, it really makes no effect. So where do we go from here? Puppyland is perfectly fine verifying on an annual basis that none of the breeders they source their dogs from are puppy mills. They can verify on an annual basis that none of the dogs are puppy mills or puppy mill dogs. An annual pet store certification, annual breeder inspection certification accomplishes the reported goal, which is to allow some reputable pet stores to still talk to dogs from reputable safe breeders with both open to, you know, riskful inspections and, you know, circumstances. Further, according to these statistics listed from bailing out Benji indicate puppy mill conditions. I think they said three dogs left 2,400 to six, and they focus on financing issues which are not related to breeding conditions. So further targeting and forcing a local store to close its doors and fire from 20 plus pet-loving employees will not stop that breeding practice. People want their choice of dogs. Some like to rescue, some like their unique breed. Sometimes it is not possible to go in a breeder and say, find a specific breed that one wants. Many instances, puppyland is the only place to get a specific breed safely and effectively. And should puppyland be forced to close, puppy's certain specific breeds still will be bought and sold to the city. Removing a safe and monitored pet store from mutualism will lead to increased presence of dogs bred in unmonitored condition with animals being sold to the city. This already happens, and that contributes to the problem of dogs being bred in poor condition far more than that puppy mills. As mentioned before, puppies are willing to work with the city to find common sense mill ground that actually reduces the supply of puppy mill bred dogs to the city rent and increases the welfare of that old soul to the United States limit. In closing, as both portions did not accomplish that goal, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Diane Dobson. Diane, go ahead.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Diane Dobson, representative, CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, come to you today to discuss the matter of the BNO tax increase you're considering tonight and urge you to reconsider the same. I understand there are budgeting shortfalls upcoming and the city is trying to find ways to raise those funds with the least amount of impact, but I ask if this is indeed the best approach, as there has not been any discussion as to the type of impact this might have upon our business community with the business community. Taxation without representation is a basic premise behind the Constitution of the United States. While we've been advised the council discussed rates and the BNO taxes at the council retreat, which is indeed a public meeting, BNO taxes and the potential increase thereof has been a discussion for years. To learn the matter came on an agenda for action without advance awareness or committee discussions in the finance committee or the committee of the whole begs into question the transparency of public process, something we've heard about from a number of individuals who have spoken before me tonight. The question's been posed to the city as also as to RCW 35.21.706, which governs the imposition or increase of business occupation taxes needed to be put on a ballot with the minimum number of signatures for a vote at general election. I don't make the assertion this did not happen, but we have asked the city for verification of that process or business community better understands the same. When there was a waste transfer station proposed, we heard the same as a community and the need to pay attention, if not act as a community upon the same. To learn there's a matter so impactful to business as a BNO tax increase of nearly 50% without that same courtesy of awareness was disappointing to say the least, especially when maybe you ran for your seats under the guise of supporting small business. While some have indicated this isn't a large increase or it's the cost of doing business, it's up to those businesses impacted to determine their extent of that impact felt. And while this seems like a small increase of city taxes, I fall back to the example of a pie. And while every entity around is leveraging small taxes, these small pieces all add up. And as everyone takes a small piece of the pie, eventually there's little to no pie left. And that pie is what we're trying to save and savor for our business owners, the same business owners who have been trying to survive for the past two and a half years of the pandemic. Those business owners who are our neighbors and our friends and who, while they're suffering from workforce shortages, we're asking them to help provide livable wages for their employees as each agency, city, county, and state takes just a little bit more in their taxes. Activated alleyways, wayfinding signs, activation of the big five lot, safe and clean public parking facilities, parklets ready to install at the end of construction, street closures to bring business safely outside, business grants for recovery and to mitigate the impacts of street construction, advocacy for the impacts of county shelters. These are the things our small businesses need right now, and we have been begging for, for literally years through this pandemic. I ask the council to reconsider the increase of the BNO tax at least until conversation can happen with the business community as to better understanding what the impact that 50% again increase of taxes has upon them. Thank you very much.
Hey.
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
That's everyone. Okay, we are on to the consent agenda. We have nine items. Are there any items that council would like pulled for separate consideration?
Obviously.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Van.
Sorry, I came in late. My, well, Jean, I just want to say thank you to meeting members for coming out to comment and for educating us on the issues that I mess up. Not research, but I'm so very much appreciative of what you did. Thank you, Mr.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Seeing no council members wishing to poll any items from the consent agenda, I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince that the consent agenda be approved as published. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee of the whole has two reports to present.
Okay, Committee of the Whole Committee Report, renaming of the Renton Senior Activity Center. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve through the city facility renaming process that the Renton Senior Activity Center be renamed the Don Person Activity Center as established in Policy 604. This is signed by Council President.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move that the council concur with the committee of the whole report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince that the council concur with the committee of the whole report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding property pollution and cyber insurance policies. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrent concurrence in the staff recommendation to renew the city's 2022 through 2023 property pollution and cyber insurance policies in the amount of $944,498 for the period July 1st, 2022 through July 1st, 2023. Rates are secured through a third-party broker, Alliant Insurance Services, which was approved by council in 2015. Premium rates are determined by factors such as market conditions, the city's loss run history, levels of coverage, and the city's self-insured retention. The city will bind these insurance policies with Alliant Insurance Services on July 1st, 2022. This is also signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Council President. I move that the council concur with the committee of the whole report.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince that the council concur with the committee of the whole reports. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the planning and development committee has a committee report.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee Committee Report, 2022 Title IV Docket 17 Group A. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the 2022 Title IV Docket 17 Group A items. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the items listed below be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. Docket D 193, C End Zone Amendments, this is part of the 2021 Title IV Docket 16, which was referred back in March 2021. And then Docket 209, the Solar System Exemption, Docket 210, Medical Institutions in EA, Docket 211, applicability of MFTE to market rate townhomes, and Docket 212, phasing duration for master plans. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. And Councilmember Perez.
Non-finished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I have to put Councilmember Van back on my list here. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize and I have unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the finance committee has two committee reports this evening.
Okay, Finance Committee, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments, accounts payable, total payment of $10,381,696.12 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and four wire transfers. Two is payroll, a total payment of $1,781,643.66 for payroll vouchers, including 609 direct deposits and 13 checks. This is the May 16th through 31st pay period. Kidder Matthew vouchers totaling $38,498.2 and municipal court vouchers totaling $5,827.70. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the committee, with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final report is regarding an amendment to a contract for downtown streetscape Phase Two project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the amendment to Contract 22. amendment to Contract 22028 with KPG SOMAs Incorporated in the amount of $303,333.08, which reassigned the contract due to a corporate merger and modifies the scope of work to include preparation of final bid documents and oversight assistance during the bid process. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to legislation. We have two ordinance, one for first reading and one for second reading.
Okay, the ordinance for first reading is Ordinance Number 6072. It's an ordinance prohibiting the sale of dogs sourced from puppy mills. It was approved via the June 13th Planning and Development Committee Report. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 65 of the Renton Municipal Code to add a new section, 654, prohibiting the sale, delivery, and marketing for sale of dogs sourced from puppy mills, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date of January 1st, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yes, Councilmember Van.
I'm sorry. And given the information of today and given the resolution and legislation, what I would like our council to really do the research and understand the chemistry in terms of puppy sales is to know that in a nutshell, there is disparities in opportunities, missed opportunities for our market march on these, that I hope that we will obtain a motion to pause and do some research with the issue, looking at this call of Pierce County's council resolution that was recently passed, just give us all opportunity to learn about.
Okay, so just so I can be clear, you want to make a motion to pause, put the ordinance on pause, is that what I hear?
Yes, to learn more, to do the research that was provided to us for Pierce County legislation.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to put a pause on this ordinance to do more research.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
So what do we do since I had already made a motion? I guess I'm looking at Jason.
She's, it's a motion to amend it, isn't it?
Yes, motion to amend.
Isn't that what, would it be set up to amend it?
Yeah, so we need to vote on the motion to amend before we finish the vote for.
Yeah, so, okay, so.
And it needs a second.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor to amend this ordinance to put a pause on for future and more research. Not hearing a second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just a half second here, you know, given, I've done my research for today, there's new information, particularly with Pierce County Council on their legislation, I would be want to at least take a look at it and see a more sound policy. I myself went in on the sheets and protests with council, with our constituents and received the issues as well as to.
Yes, Councilmember Van, I want to point out, that's why we have the double voting on the ordinance. So there is a week between now and the next ordinance, but there's actually two weeks. So, so we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion?
Let's see, I need a second.
Nope, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's another one?
There's no second.
Second, for her most.
Yeah, there wasn't.
There wasn't a second? Oh, well, I need a second on the first one. We're now, we're now moving on the original ordinance.
But there was a, right, there was a motion to refer the ordinance for second and final reading at the next meeting, and then we had a motion to amend that motion to essentially strike it and to put this ordinance on pause until more research could be done. That motion has not received a second.
Second, so now I'm looking for a second on the first motion, which is to put it on the second and final reading at the next council meeting.
I already, oh.
You did second.
You did.
Okay, so I'm back to the vote again.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor to put this ordinance on second and final reading at the next council meeting. Any more discussion? Okay, without the minute, yes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, that was, did you get that?
Yes, Ms. Van, or Councilmember Van voted nay.
Yep, motion carries.
Okay.
A little tricky, but we worked our way through that.
Non-procured.
Yeah, well, we haven't had that one in a while.
Okay, so the next ordinance is up for second and final reading, which will require a roll call vote. It is regarding the BNO tax adjustment. So an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 5254A of the Renton Municipal Code by adjusting the business and occupation tax rate, authorizing corrections, providing for a referendum procedure, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Any discussion? This requires roll call.
Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Sorry, I have discussion, but this is in regard to the BNO tax.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry about the discussion. Nay.
Nay, okay. All right, Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, six ayes, one nay.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, we are on to new business. Council President McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first I'd like to announce that the, there will be no meetings on Monday, July 4th, in observance of the Independence Day holiday. And then on Monday, July 11th, the Committee of the Whole will be meeting at 6:00 PM in the Council Conferencing Center and via video conference. There's one item on the agenda, and that's Renton Chief's Community Council. Following that, we will have our regular council meeting here in chambers at 7:00 PM, as well as via video conference, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I clarify, is that in the council conferencing room or in the seventh floor conferencing center?
That's conferencing. I got conferencing center.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, lost my place here. On Monday, July 11th, at 5:00 PM, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. We have three items on the agenda, storm water source pollution control, docket 17 Group B update, and emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Perez.
No, no, it's Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any business.
Okay, Councilmember Alberston.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee will be meeting on Monday, July 11th, at 3:15 PM in the council conference room and by video conference. We'll be discussing and reviewing the Renton multicultural festival highlights. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, July 11th, at 4:00 PM, the Finance Committee will be meeting in the council conference room as well as via video conference. We have nine items on the agenda. The first is code compliance inspector addition and civil engineer three conversion. Second is sound publishing shop local program. Three is the King County Festivals and Events Grants. Fourth is the 2022 second quarter budget amendment ordinance and 2021-22 fee schedule resolution. The fifth is the Philip Arnold Park Site Improvements Project Contract Award. Sixth is Talbot Hill Reservoir Park Youth Athletic Facilities Grants for Park and Court Improvements. Seventh is Landscape Structure Inc. Agreement for the Senior Activity Center Outdoor Improvements. Eighth is the Surface Water Utility Engineering Specialist III Edition, and finally, ninth vouchers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
All right, thank you. And so I would like to circle back really quick and thank the council for their vote on the naming of the senior center to the Don Person Center. It's so very rare that we take up the naming of one of our properties and Don, it just really is a testament to the work that Don did here at the city with his years in service at the police department and then also here on city council. So I want to thank you for that, and I'm sure the family is very thankful also. So with that, what's the wish of the council?
Move adjourned.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to add this into me, kind of just to the words out of my mouth, you know, the scene that I occupied was once by the late great Mr. Don Person, and so I want to thank our council colleagues for your support for that, and just the tremendous mentorship and legacy that Mr. Don Person has left behind himself. Just very much thank you. And also, I hope that I've started, which is absent, so thank you.
Yes, indeed. Yes, you would have, you'd have liked working with him on council. He was fantastic to work with. What's the wish of the council?
Move adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved, we adjourned. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We.